We'll call Jacob, please. Moon?
Here.
Hyde?
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Dietrich?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Friends? Peterson?
Here.
Koemer?
Here.
Bauer?
Here.
Thanks. Let's.
I believe in the United States of America. The children of my land, for which stands one nation under God. In the midst of all the 13 judges to draw.
Welcome, everybody. The mayor is with football, Reesburg Football tonight, so I'm in his shoes or chair. So, all right, the council will receive information on non-agenda topics brought before the council by members of the public. The council will not discuss these topics and will not take action on any of them at this meeting. Is there anybody here that wants to say anything? All right. Hearing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. We have a single item, approved meeting minutes from August 11, 2025 of the common council meeting.
Who'd approve?
Second.
Adam. Get that, Jacob?
Yeah.
All right. The discussion, we have a motion, a second. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you. Presentations. Kurt Muko, City of Reesburg, 2024 Housing Market Study. Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. Before I forget, I want to mention Andy Kurtz is with us tonight. He's, I think, been with our firm two years now. He manages the planning and community development function of the company, and he's got a little more detail in his head on this topic than I do. So in case you guys have a question I can't answer, we can turn to Andy. So anyways, I asked Max how much time I got, and he said, take as much time as you want. Say 10 minutes. And which is, which is, yeah, and Tim said six. To be hon, I'm going to, I got a lot of content. I'm going to go through it quick. I could easily take an hour on this, okay? But obviously, we don't want to do that tonight. So the topic is twofold. First, an overview of the housing study, and then second, affordable, single-family housing strategies. And we're talking about that because, as you know, the inventory of single-family lots is getting pretty small, and there's a much more demand. So we're going to have to deal with getting new subdivisions developed. Jacob, are you going to advance this thing? Yeah, so every 10 years by state statute, the Department of Administration is required to do a 30-year population projection. They do it after the census is done, three to five years after the census. Well, in January of this year, they released their new 30-year projection based on 2020 census, and for the first time in history, they're projecting a decrease in the state's population over the next 30 years. And if you remember back in January, that hit the news headlines. There was a lot of discussion about it. Breaking that down a little bit, this decade, 2020 to 2030, 55 of the counties are projected to decrease in population, five are going to stay stable, 12 will increase. Fortunately, Sauk County is one of the 12 with an estimated 2% increase. Wisconsin's population is going to stay flat this decade. 2030 to 2040, you can see the numbers, 56 counties are going to decrease, four will stay stable, 12 will increase, including in Sauk County, and Wisconsin will drop by 1%. So because this was a significant change, we met with, talked with the analysts at the Department of Administration to drill into this a little bit. The methodology they use is very complex, but there's three primary factors that impact population. The first is fertility, which is birth rate, mortality, which is death rate, and migration. Communities cannot do much to impact fertility and mortality. It's based on demographics, and you are who you are, but communities can impact migration. And so how do you do that? By implementing a vibrant community development program. And as I was putting this together, I got this, I kept saying to myself, well, I'm kind of preaching to the choir because Reesburg has a vibrant community development program. You are a migration-plus community, but there are a lot of communities that are migration-minus, and they will be on the reverse side of the population trends. So how does, go ahead, Jacob. No, I think you skipped one. Yeah. So this table shows Reesburg's population. In 2020, based on census, it was 9,984. 2024 actual was 10,516. DOA's new projection estimates your population in 2030 is going to be 10,661. You'll probably hit that this year, okay? So that's a reflection that you're, because of your community development program, because you're a migration-plus community, you're going to do better than what DOA's forecast is. Next slide. And so obviously, population is a huge factor in a housing market study. Housing is needed to address new people coming to town. So this table kind of shows how we came up with what we're using in the housing study. The DOA's population projection for Reesburg from 2020 to 2040, their 2013 projection, you are going to grow 22%. Their new projection shows you're going to grow 13%, and we feel that that's grossly underestimated. And so what we're using in the housing study is a 20% increase between now and 2040. So what's that mean? That's 1,839 additional people, and using the estimated number of people per household, that's 772 new households. However, we need more than 772 housing units because the vacancy rate in Reesburg is very, very low. Owner occupied is essentially zero. Renter occupied has hovered at about 4%. A healthy vacancy rate is 6 to 8%. And so to, so what that means is we're estimating there is a demand for 1,020 additional housing units to not only meet the population growth, but to have a healthy vacancy rate. So how does that compare? That, for this planning period, between now and 2040, that's an average of 64 units a year. If we look back, over the last 32 years, we've averaged 68. So really, what this means is it's more of the same, really a continuation of what Reesburg's been doing for the last 30 years moving forward. And then breaking that down, what type of housing is needed between single-family, multifamily, senior? On the bottom, I kind of did a little summary. Single-family, we need the 388 estimated single-family housing units, but then we're estimating 50% of the senior, which is 55 and older, housing units will be a single-family. So we need a little over 500 single-family housing units over the, between now and 2040, and 474. So out of this housing study, in my mind, probably the biggest challenge is creating affordable lots for those 500 single-family homes. And we did a little bit of an inventory, including my home estates, 60-some units, and what's left in East Ridge and other subdivisions. There's a little over 100 probably out there, so it's about 20% of what's going to be needed. And then this slide just breaks down again for what type of ownership and what, and you know, it really is a blend. There is a demand for first-time home buyer, which is they need starter homes. There's what is called step-up housing, which is, you know, 35 to 55-year-old groups. They need larger homes. And then the seniors, and quite frankly, seniors, which is 55 to 79, they need all of the above, executive homes, large, small, single-level assisted living. So that's kind of in a real quick nutshell, the housing study. And I've got a handful of slides that illustrate strategies for creating a more affordable single-family. And again, this is largely, I'm speaking to the choir. This first one is you can use alternate approaches to infrastructure design. Every street in Reesburg, residential streets, 40 feet wide, curb-to-curb, with five-foot concrete sidewalks. You can narrow those streets up. A lot of communities are going to like 36 feet wide, and if you do that, the cost reduction is like 12%. Not a lot, doesn't move the needle, but it does save money. If any of you have gone to some of the new subdivisions in the suburbs of Madison, some of those are 26-feet-wide streets, you know, they're just incredibly narrow and so forth. But that's one strategy. Another is high density. This project happens to be the Bindle addition, which you're all familiar with. It's a great example. That was created, developed at a time when there was a severe workforce shortage. And from a zoning standpoint, you used your planned unit development to allow smaller lots and smaller housing units. There were covenants recorded to address quality of life, and that project was 100% developer-funded, but the point is, is the lots are 60 feet wide. The other lots in all of, you know, majority of the subdivisions in Reesburg are 85 to 100 foot wide. So just that adjustment, you're reducing costs related to land and infrastructure by 30 to 40% by going higher density. The next is zero lot lines zoning. That was huge when the city adopted that. Basically, in this, this example are duplexes. Again, you can have a 50-foot-wide lot per unit as compared to a conventional 85 to 100-foot-wide lot for conventional single-family. That's a 40 to 50% reduction in land and infrastructure costs. And then the next zero lot line slide is for row houses. And your ordinance allows up to eight, assuming a 20-foot-wide lot per unit. That's a 75 to 80% cost reduction per unit. So go ahead, Jacob. And I'll circle back to that a little bit with a real-life example. ADUs is another example. You've already amended your ordinance to allow ADUs. I do not believe there's been any yet in the city, but you've, you've provided for that. The next is the bungalow courts. You've also amended your ordinance to allow for that. So some of the things, the tools that are available that offer developers flexibility, you've already put in place. And then last is what we call the senior-to-workforce housing transition, my home estates, you know, by creating an attractive senior development to encourage people to move out of their bigger, older homes, free that housing stock up for young families is a great strategy for creating affordable housing for younger families and the workforce. So the last two slides, I think, yeah, illustrate a conventional subdivision, and this happens to be Ernst Meyer Edition, 18th Edition, okay? It was platted, but I don't think the plat was ever recorded, but this is the traditional Reesburg subdivision. The lots are 100-foot-wide, single-family. There's 14 housing units, and the infrastructure cost will be just north of $63,000 per unit. And as you know, now lots been selling in Reesburg for about $35,000. So if you've got that kind of a cost for just the infrastructure, not counting land, not counting other costs, you can see what the challenge is. The last slide is that same subdivision using some of the best practices that we went over. First of all, on the left side, instead of four, single-family, those lots are big enough for duplexes, so you're doubling the number of units. And east of the street, Doris Road, we went from 10 housing units, single-family, to 12. We tightened them up to around 80 feet, something like that. And so the impact of that is we're reducing the infrastructure costs by almost $20,000 per housing unit by doing nothing else than just using a higher-density strategy. So I am 11 minutes into my presentation.
Does anybody have any questions for Kurt? So what's the appetite for a developer, Kurt, to go with that higher density?
Well, developers like duplexes because there's a strong market for them, and so that component of it is a non-issue. The higher density, I don't think going to 80-foot lots will be an issue at all. That's a subtle adjustment. If we were going to push it to 60-foot or 65-foot, I think the minimum by code is 66-foot without doing a, you know, some, you know, zoning stuff, that would be a bit more of a, you'd probably get some pushback on that. Plus, the buyers, you know, I think when you get in a rural community, they want bigger lots, you know, bigger footprints and stuff. But that last example, I think, is, I don't think there will be an issue with that.
Or what would you imagine that a market rate lot would go for if it was 44 or 5?
Well, that's per unit, and so you've got, on a duplex lot, you've got two units and a single. Well, just what I have been saying is, it's, number one, is not realistic to assume lots are going to be $35,000 going forward. So what's affordable? I'm suggesting $50,000 should work, and I've run that by builders and developers, and they've kind of agreed with that. And that's quite a bit, you know, so that's, so that means we have to do, you know, some mixed-use, higher-density stuff. And then the duplex, I think we could go like $35,000 per unit, but that's just kind of round numbers. But in addition to infrastructure, you've got land, and if they're carrying the cost, you've got interest and perhaps realtor fees, and so it's not, you know, the infrastructure is just one number.
Anything else for Kurt?
Just curious on what the population study-type stuff, where we sit with our demographics? I know there's some communities around us that are pretty challenged with op-heavy, 65 and plus.
Yeah, that's a good question. We, we were shocked by some of the numbers. We work in a lot of communities in southern and southwest Wisconsin. We have quite a few communities where their population is projected to decrease by over 20%, and that's largely because of fertility and mortality. They're an older, their demographics are older, and so it's really imperative for those communities that they become a migration-plus community, that they really get after it and promote development, or they're going to realize a significant decrease, at least based on the projections.
Yep. Has immigration been a factor considered on standalone, or is it just simply those that are here, those that are being birthed, those that are dying?
No, immigration is a factor, migration is a factor. You know, when we press the analysts at DOA, they are very, very, very confident in their state population projection. When you get down to the county level, they're very confident, but when you get down to the municipal level, they're less confident, okay? So globally, they really believe in their numbers, but then the, you know, the closer you get to home, they don't know what's going on in Reesburg, okay? Quite, you know, so that's why we don't think that their projection is correct, but it's a good starting point, okay?
Idea where people are migrating from to come here?
We don't have a lot. A lot of those people, we have a lot of anecdotal data, there's people coming. No, there's a good availability compared to other communities. Potentially more affordable than other communities. So in Sauk County, Reesburg is pretty good, and obviously you've got Dane County itself, which is crazy in terms of price, but their population is, on the migration here seems to come from, you know, the industrial.
There's two things that we've heard consistently from realtors over the years is people get a job in Sauk County, be it Baraboo, wherever, they start looking for housing. Many times, they end up in Reesburg because it's less expensive, and that's a great place to be. The second thing is broadband has been a huge asset, and you remember that when all those houses were being built up at Ridgeview or East Ridge, was it 65% of them were, that was kind of COVID, post-COVID, were from the metro areas and moved here to get out of the metro area and work from home. And that's a, quite an astonishing number, and a lot of them came from Milwaukee, Madison, Minneapolis.
Isn't half of the migration issue, you know, we focus on bringing people here, but it seems to me we're losing fewer people. I mean, our young people are graduating high school, they're not leaving like they used to. Does that show up in your study at all?
Well, I can't give you, based on DOA's 2013 and our, before their last projections, Reesburg was younger, quite a bit younger than Sauk County and the state. We're almost the same now in terms of the demographics, so.
I can tell you anecdotally, you know, one of the big changes, next week I start my 25th year teaching at the high school. When I started, and it's fun to talk to high school kids about where you want to be in five, 10 years. When I started, it was, I can't wait to get out of Reesburg. That's changed. Now they look at me, why would I ever leave? So.
Well, that's good to hear.
That's a good trend.
That, that's a lot because of the quality-of-life things, you know, that the council's been in, you know, spearheading and, and good school, good healthcare, good jobs. And I wonder if the internet has changed that, too. You know, they, they can have a good job and work remote.
Do you have any data on how the addition to the courtyards is going to affect housing?
Yeah, all of this is pre-courtyards. So in the housing, the type of units, there was, I think, 41 other. Well, mobile homes are considered other, is that correct? So actually, the courtyards addition is going to be more than meet the demand for that, so that might shift some of the single-family demand over to other category, and that might help meet the demand. And all this data is before my home estates, too, so. And if you count the number of housing units that are coming online in 2025, it's like over 200, which is a lot. So.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you so much.
All right, general business number one has been struck, it appears.
Struck. Yes, that's going to be on the agenda for the first meeting in September.
All right. Recommendations from boards, committees, and commissions. Recommendation from plan commission, second reading, public hearing, and approved deny ordinance number 197525, amending the floodplain zoning ordinance to conform with FEMA's community rating system. Brian?
Bringing this ordinance back to you again, so basically it's just adding a few things to make sure that we're two feet above the floodplain level with the base flood elevation, so like things like utilities, basements, and that, which is ordering the ordinance now, but just a few more things are being added to that to match the CRS program and the state model code.
Any questions for Brian? All right, hearing none, we'll take it to public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak for or against ordinance number 1975-25? Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak for or against ordinance number 197525? Last call, anybody in the audience wishing to speak for or against ordinance 1975-25? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
I'll move to approve ordinance 1975-25.
Motion by Jason.
Second.
Second by Messi. Any further discussion on ordinance 1975-25? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. No, Jacob, we'll call.
We'll call. Moon?
Aye.
Hyde?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Dietrich?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Friends?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Koemer?
Aye.
Bauer?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, recommendation from Personnel Committee, approve or deny the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the City of Reesburg and the Reesburg Police Officers Association for the 2026 to 2028 period max.
Yes, so we've been negotiating with the police association, I believe, since May, and Personnel Committee has had two separate, actually, maybe even three meetings with discussions. We had a meeting this month that involved the Personnel Committee and the police association rep, and then two of the officers that are the reps for the union and have come to a tentative agreement. I can go through each of the items if you'd like really quick. It should be pretty short. Many of the issues are either administrative issues or what I would call minor issues that were basically clarifications of the previous agreement. And then in the end, there's a wage increase as well. So just going through the tentative agreement, the first change from the previous collective bargaining agreement is that, I guess this is more of a clarification, but when officers are working on holidays, they get holiday pay. And the previous agreement was silent on whether or not if they were scheduled and then were required to work extra time on that holiday, if they continued to get holiday pay, or if they went back to the regular rate. So the clarification was if they're working on a holiday, they have to work extra time, they continue to get that holiday pay. The second one is when they're working holidays, they previously had to take pay for their holiday. Under the new agreement, they are going to be able to basically use that as, at their option, take that as paid time off to use at a different time. This is going to provide some flexibility in terms of giving the officers extra time off. It's also going to provide administration some scheduling flexibility. So police administration and the union were both on board with that. So that's the second change. The third change is just a clarification on field training. It wasn't necessarily clear on the extra amount of money that people were making during field training and how much time they were required to field train to get that extra money. So that was the third clarification. The fourth change is that the police chief has some more flexibility in assigning probationary officers on their shifts based on the time that they start. This is to basically assist on those probationary officers' field training and their initial shift assignments. So for example, if administration believes that an officer is going to learn more, thrive on day shift or night shift, they're going to have the authority to basically assign those shifts instead of get, putting them directly in the, in the seniority pool, which basically would give them the last option for what shift they're going to have. Let's see.
The unit went with that?
Yes, they were completely okay with it. There was no pushback. The fourth change is just changing distance required to live around Reesburg to time. So it used to be 20 miles, and that was changed to 45 minutes. Again, that was more of a.
That depended on how fast they drive?
The fourth change is just changing distance required to live around Reesburg to time. So it used to be 20 miles and that was changed to 45 minutes. Again, that was more of a.
It depended on how fast they drive?
During discussions, we, we discussed on Google Map time. But yeah, that was a clarification just to ease up on distance. Time is more important than distance in terms of the distance away or how far someone works. Item number six was giving administration authority to do what's called a power shift. So currently, the 12-hour shifts are 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. or 5:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. A power shift is going to be able to shift that to more busy times. So for example, you might be able to move a 5:00 p.m. to a 5:00 a.m. shift to like a 1:00 p.m. to a 1:00 a.m., which is going to cover a more, more demanding time for the city and the department. Again, no pushback on that whatsoever. And then I'm going to take the rest of the items as one, and that's basically the wages. So previously, there was a five-step system. So when you started, with zero experience, you started at one. After one year, you go to two, three, four, five. Shift, step one was substantially less than step two in terms of wages. And in speaking with chief and staff, we've been losing a lot of young officers and are continuing to have to hire officers. So at the city suggesting, we, we suggested to remove that first step. So now everyone starts on step, previous step two, which was now, which is now step one. So that greatly increases the, the, the starting wage essentially for a new officer. And we're hoping that's going to help in terms of attracting new officers and retaining new officers. In that, we decided to just basically get rid of that. Now we have four steps. And then for scheduled increases for the next three years, basically it's a 6%, 5%, then 4%, and those are split up halfway through each year. So it's 3-3 in the first year, 2.5, 2.5 the second year, 2-2 the third year. Splitting it up by those two, I know that the city's done that in the past, and it really does make a difference on the budget. That was, that number came through, I mean, that was most of the negotiations. They came in at a lot higher number, and we started at a lot lower number and kind of came into that middle ground. Other than that, we're including some of the old MOUs that were all out there into the agreement itself. And increasing the equipment budget from $600 to $800. And the contract is three years versus the previous contract is two years. Any questions? This was ratified by the police union last week.
We'll just add that the distance, I think, is going to help the department because we're going to be able to tap into a couple more communities by going out 45 minutes versus 20 or 25 miles. And the pay increase puts us on par to keep up with our main competitors. So the ones that we, we lose a lot of people to.
Out of curiosity, what's the plan as far as cadets or police officers that were hired within the last year and getting them equalized?
Yep, so anyone, so, so for example, we've hired three new officers in the last six months, is that right, chief? Somewhere around there? Currently, they're in step one. As of January 1st, they're going to bump up to the new step one.
Step one or step twos go up as well? Everybody will?
Yes, so everybody bumps up January 1st. So as a part of that, steps one and steps two next year will not have those increases because they're both getting pretty substantial increases at the first year. So they won't get that 3%, 3%. But in the end, they're getting a higher raise.
All right, and we'll take you to the council. Anybody? President?
Yes, sir. As it got explained more in depth, I, I'm not on the county's personnel committee, but I am the vice chair of the law enforcement and judiciary committee, and so I will be abstaining.
Dave and Sonny, you two are on the personnel committee, you want to chime in at all?
Well, I'll chime in to move to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Reesburg Police Officers Association.
I'd second that.
Motion by Dave and a second by Aaron. Any further discussion on the collective bargaining agreement? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And John is going to abstain. All right, thank you. Commissions, committee, board, and staff reports. Personnel committee, we just talked about what we've been dealing with. R E D C.
Max, do you want me to give a quick overview? And then I will ask you for some numbers if you want to start pulling them up. So we had our breakfast at Just the Game at the Fieldhouse and Friday. And Max disclosed some numbers on usage today. I don't know if you have those on the top of your head.
The Fieldhouse?
Yes.
Yeah, so through our, we have a system that tracks basically foot traffic data. And in the last 12 months, there has been roughly 75,000 to 80,000 people that have been in and out of the Fieldhouse. And that really is like the last nine months, not the last 12 months. And about two-thirds of those are people that live more than 25 miles away from the city of Reesburg. So we're getting about, well, I consider about a third of the traffic is local people, and two-thirds are people from outside of the area. Primarily, those are suburbs of Madison, La Crosse area, suburbs of Appleton, suburbs of Milwaukee, suburbs of Chicago. So those are the types of people on the weekends that are coming into the Fieldhouse. And through that data, we can kind of see where they're going before and after. And about 10 to, 10 to 15% of those people are either right before or right after getting food somewhere in Reesburg. So that's a good number, and I think it's something that we can focus on in improving and attracting businesses to, to Reesburg. And we're planning on using that data to try to attract people. And I think it's going to make those, the lots in front of Land's End Building very attractive, as well as really anywhere on Viking or on Main Street. That's where the majority of that traffic comes from.
Significant chunk also did use our hotels. And the 70,000 is them saying they're operating at about 40%. So if they get that up to the level they want to get it to, that number's going to be much higher.
Very good. Plan commission. And on it's like, did they meet?
I can talk.
Brian?
Big thing was the.
Library board.
Yeah, appreciate that, Sue Ann, giving me some notes here as I was away with family commitment last week. But thank you to all the library users and supporters for a fantastic summer. Fall hours will begin September 7th and Sunday hours returning. Sundays will be 12 to 3:00 p.m. Fall programs begin the week, September 8th, with all regular programs returning, as well as some fun author and other programs. They encourage to check the calendar, the library calendar for more details. Concept and site planning for the future library facility has been going well. Presentation of the project report is planned for the September 11th library board meeting. And so also a reminder, fall friends of the library, the book sale is September 4th through the 7th. So, yeah.
Thank you, Sonny. Public Works, we met and Steve presented the CEP and CIP for the budget proposal coming up, and then just gave us an update on all the projects and, and how the stuff is keeping his crew busy. Utility commission.
Utility commission met for their regular monthly meeting on August 18th. Jacob Gonzalez, fiber line worker is returning from military leave. They recently hired Sean Bean as a fiber line worker, so now they're sufficiently staffed in that position. Mike Kinzer, electric line worker, was recognized for his 10 years of service. W P P I Energy gave a presentation about W P P I to the commission. That's just where, Reesburg Utility Commission is part of 71 utilities in the state and surrounding states that just have a better buying power for energy and stuff. Updating their PGS1 parallel generation tariff to minimize cross subsidies for customers own solar being paid for by other customers. And we approved nonprofit energy efficiency grants to St. John's Church, Reesburg United Methodist Church, and Sacred Heart School. Electric crews installing new wholesale meters at the substations, replacing pad mount switch gears, installing electric service to Legends Park. Water departments performing valve and service maintenance and dead-end main flushing. And that's about it.
Jake.
CDA. We reviewed three plans Tuesday, one day this week, last week, I don't know.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah. And approved two of them, so you'll be good to know that yoga will be continuing in Reesburg for another six months for sure. I was also asked by Phil to maybe get some numbers together, which Brian did for us. We have funded or we have approved 41 projects. 29 of them remain open at this point, five have closed, four never opened but never received funding. Two have openings pending but still have not received funding, and one moved out of the area. So we funded 35 projects, 29 of them remain open, so 82% success rate. National average, depending on the data source, has a 32% fail rate in the first two years, so we're a little ahead of that. Just to kind of maybe go through our practices for the incubator program a little bit, because there's been some misinformation out there. We do evaluate each project needing a business plan and some budgetary information. Typically, if we choose to fund them, we fund them for six months, a portion of the rent, and then have them come back for us, potential for another six months. First few years, we only were getting a request or two a year. Now we're up to about eight requests or more per year, so it has definitely increased. I do want to also take this moment to thank the other community members or community and council members who are on that committee because they do come in prepared, ask a lot of great questions, and have a great growth mindset for this program. So Sonny Hyde is also on there as a council member. We have Beth DeForge, Jody Byer, Matt Smertzka, and Todd Polk. And Alder Moon was there when we started the program way back many years ago. And it grow and see these businesses continue to grow, and the volume of requests has just been great the last few years.
Very good.
If you have questions, I will be glad to answer them, or Brian can.
Questions for Jason on that nice update? Are any other committees or commissions that we need to hear from?
I can just give a quick update on budget schedule. So capital improvement and capital equipment review will be September 8th. And then we'll have a council budget workshop October 6th with a potential second one on October 20th. October 13th will be the final capital improvement and capital equipment. Then November 6th for public hearing noticed, and November 24th, public hearing and budget, budget adoption is the plan. I can send out an email with those dates afterwards because I said them fast.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, there'll be a quiz later. All right. We might as well go around the horseshoe. Aaron?
Nothing tonight.
Jake? Missy?
Thank you.
Tim? Mac?
Better than me.
Jacob? Joe, welcome back.
Well, I do have something. I want to remind everybody about the Greenwood Cemetery Gala, where I will be playing Herbert Webb. And here's a little fun fact for everybody around the horseshoe. Did you know that in the 1890s, the big store in downtown Reesburg was the largest store in the state of Wisconsin between La Crosse and Milwaukee? I understand that Mr. Bauer and Mr. Moon are likewise going to be participating, so I encourage everybody to come and learn a little bit more about Reesburg history.
Thanks, Joe. John?
Saw Jacob at the football game on Friday. Reesburg defeated McFarland 42 to nothing. And something that shouldn't be lost on anyone is, I, I got there a little late, so when that happens, I tend to sit on the visitor's side. Good view and, you know, you get a seat. And McFarland had athletes on their team. They're, they're a very good football team, and, and the final score should suggest that we have a special program this year.
Very good to hear. Jason?
Kind of on that note, just a reminder, kids are going to be heading back to school next week and probably running in front of cars, so be careful.
Sonny?
Yeah, I guess piggyback, just wishing all the students and staff a great 25, 26th year.
Mr. Moon?
Nothing to add.
So Aaron, you had mentioned, is it the 13th?
First, oh man, last week I had all the dates in front of me, Phil. I believe so, yes.
Did I see a yard sign in town for?
There's a couple of them around. I know that tickets are currently available at the chamber, and they will be cheaper in advance than at the gate, I guess you might say. So anyhow, yes.
Perfect. All right.
Not available on StubHub?
Well, they might be scalping them, it's going to be a pretty good event.
They need a better actor than me.
All right. That being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Sonny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.